We have roll call. Would you please vote, please? Somehow or other, this isn't working. Hold on a second. Holly?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Holly? No?
Just the signing for the trail easements under ceremonial.
Under ceremonial items, we'll add that to the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
With that, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we prove the agenda is amended.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. I have one card. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the beginning of the meeting. Tonight, we have a...
Mayor?
Citizen comp, yes?
We didn't technically have a ceremonial item on the agenda. I didn't, I think when we discussed previously, so some of them could leave, we talked about maybe doing the signing before citizen comment.
Okay.
It's obviously your prerogative. I just wanted to, there's not necessarily a ceremonial item listed.
Okay.
On the agenda, so you could insert it anywhere. I think we had discussed before citizen comment.
Right. I'm sorry. Why don't, why don't we go ahead and do that ceremonial item now? We have, we have Mrs., let's see, where are you? There you are, Julie. And who else is with you, Julie, please? Would you come up and, all right. Counsel, would you join me? We're going to sign this contract.
This is our committee which adds some quasi awards for the many of our committee members.
This is a very large group.
This is a big group. I don't want to say. She must have been shaped all around.
All right. Where is the two? There you go. Mary. Mary, tell us. We're going to get her. We're going to get her. Yeah. Yeah. Nice to meet you. So we get some surprises. Hello. Come on, please. Do you want to form a semicircle here?
Okay.
Julie?
I'm not sorry.
No.
Which way is this so messy?
I don't know if we can get everyone in here, but remember, remember, I have my understanding as well as the grant easements here, a couple of copies of these. And Julie, would you like to say a little bit about this?
I'd love it.
Please.
Well, we're just very excited to be able to grant the recreational easement in the city of Alamosa for the trails on the Rio Grande River that has led the Rio Grande healthy link park, soon meaning the Rio Grande farm park. So, we're very thrilled to be able to do that.
And counsel is very excited to receive this gift. Is there anyone else wishing to say anything? Counsel? Counsel members?
Well, that's great. That was one of the things that, in this whole party, started with your campaign, I should, this trail to be able to all those services. And citizens, I greatly appreciate all the kind of criticism, type of, the state council that you shared and that's what's, and thank you very much.
There is something about the market.
All right. Yeah? Anybody else? Okay. Well, with that, I will sign these, I mean, hardship. Do you hold them for me, please? Just hold them for me. I didn't, I don't want to.
What should we open here to do, or you could make it?
I, I would, I would, I'll do this.
Okay. Careful.
There's a book. You know, that's one thing I like about this group. We all work together. We work well, don't we? Yeah. I hear. I hear.
Is there any initials you have on this, Mayor?
No, just, the mayor seems to be testifying.
I'll ask protection. There it is. No?
There we go.
There we go. But that's trust. We're not that.
That's an honor.
Yeah. You're out. You're out. You're sticky there. It's sticky on the side.
There you go.
There it is. We'll know that on the next one. Bye, yeah. Bye, G. No, bye, G. We'll sign that. We'll sign that. Thank you.
Very good, very good.
One more time. Yes. Peace out. There it is. There it is. We'll know that on the next one. Bye, yeah. Bye, G. No, bye, G. We'll sign that. We'll sign that.
Very good, very good.
One more time. Yes. Peace out. There it is. There it is. Three, seven, three.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Very good.
Would any of you like to make a comment before we move on? We'll move on to our citizen comment. Tonight, we have Maria Soto. Maria, would you please come to the podium? State your name and address for the record, please. We may, you may need to turn that speaker on.
Yes, I'm Maria Soto from 912 Duke Drive here in Alamosa. The reason I'm here is because there is not a handicap parking in my block where I work. I work here in the city, and there is not a handicap parking in that, in that block. And I suppose to park in the back as a, because, as I work there, I suppose to park in the back because there's a two-hour limit. But I cannot park in the back because I have fell multiple times. And I can, I have multiple documents, medical, pictures, everything. And I just looking to see if there's any way I could have an exception that I could park, maybe in the front, and if there would be like a closer handicap parking or something. Because I feel that is too hard on me, just the way that it is. There's no handicap parking, or there's a two-hour limit for the class this one.
Maria, have you had an opportunity to visit with our staff members or anyone at the city about this issue?
No.
No? Where exactly, again, is this, is this intersection or area that you'd like marked off?
700 Main Street.
Oh, 700 Main Street? Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't know. If there's any way I can go beyond that two hours, because it's just, I need to work.
Thank you, Maria. We will have a follow-up in a few minutes. We'll ask staff, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you very much for being here. So that will have follow-up. Heather, did, is there, is there a possibility of doing anything for Mrs. Soto? Or do you know the condition of that area? Or maybe someone from Public Works might know?
What might be best is if Pat exchanged information with her, and then they could talk, and the staff could take a look at the exact location, evaluate what's in that area, and take a look at it and report back at a later time.
Thank you, Heather.
I had a comment. Mayor, Main Street, I believe, is, is also a highway, right? So I know in the past, we've attempted, we've tried to put handicap deals, and it's something that you got to go through, Pat, through the C dot probably.
We could potentially put something on San Juan.
Oh, San Juan?
Right.
That's great. Thank you.
Counsel, over here.
Thank you, Mayor. In the meantime, can we address the two-hour parking issue?
That could be a little more challenging, because we don't know which person is parking there to work that might be handicapped with the proper tagging versus someone who might just be shopping. So without knowing who's a worker and who might be shopping and have the same type of tag, that might be a harder situation to get to right away. Does, does that make sense?
It makes sense, but, I mean, if we can just find out what her, what she drives and say, until we figure something out.
Why don't we, why don't we allow staff the opportunity to look into the situation, counsel, and come back with a recommendation? Would that be something we could do? That'd be something we could do. In the interim, let's allow staff to do that and progress, so we can give Mrs. Soto a definite answer and, and not something temporary. That work? All right. Before I go any further, we've got some honored guests in the, in the audience today. We've got our, one of our county commissioners, Mary Ann Dunn, and of course, our sheriff. Welcome, Sheriff. Welcome, Mary Ann. Robert, it's, it's good to see you. I remember when you sat on the other side over by, thank you for being here. We'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Counsel may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Counsel, tonight, we have six items. Approval of minutes for the February 3 meeting. Receive the January 2016 expenditure report. Receive the January 2016 monthly reports. Appoint Mark Bitman to the recreational advisory board. Award of bid for the 2016 Fire Department Command Pickup. And a permitted use by special review requested by Martin D. and Jose de Jesus Lopez to allow outdoor dining in a commercial business district. Any questions or comments on Consent Calendar A? Counsel Gregel.
I had one. I'd like to maybe take C 6A and put it down at regular, right before regular business, so we could discuss that. And I had a comment, but, and maybe Eric might be able to, on the C 1A, the permitted use for special review, I know under liquor, we're going to look at modification of premises. Is that something that, is, are we going maybe ahead of ourselves, Eric? Or is that something that?
I think this is actually the order in which we would want to do it, because there would not be grounds for modification of premises unless the actual special review permit was approved.
Okay.
If you don't, if they don't have the right to do the zoning portion of it, then they wouldn't be able to get the liquor approval.
All right. Thank you. I was just a little confused, because I, I thought they were kind of backwards, you know, you, you give the, the.
They do go hand in hand, but, but it makes sense to do the zoning first, because without that, they wouldn't be able to do, to do the liquor, no matter what.
Okay. So if we could, Mayor, like I said, move 6A, I mean, C 6A under, right, right before regular business?
Okay. Are you making a motion?
Mayor, that, that doesn't require a motion. Any counselor can pull any matter.
Okay. I didn't know if he wanted that before he made his motion to approve.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead then, Mayor, and make the motion that we approve Consent Calendar A as amended.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to amend Calendar A. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Move on to regular business, and so we will move C 1A, the permitted use by special review. No, I'm sorry. C 6A, the award of bid for the 2016 Fire Department Command Pickup into regular business. Counsel Gregel.
Yes, the reason I pulled this is, it asks counsel to, to, there's three bids, and it asks counsel to either take our, our home local bid, or, and I'm trying to put this up here. It's either do our home local bidder, here, car salespeople, or the, what is it? Is it Johnson's Auto Plaza?
Correct.
Correct. And I, you know, it, it asks for counsel to make that decision, and when you put it on Consent Calendar A, is staff making that decision? Because they're recommending to go with, with, which I don't have no problem with the local, local bidder.
Counsel's making the decision when you vote to pass the consent. The consent items are usually those that require less discussion, and so they're, they're grouped under consent. So counsel, staff on all the items is making a recommendation. It's counsel that's voting to make the final decision.
On another point also is, there's been people out there saying that we don't spend our money here in Alamosa. And when you stuck, when you stick something like this in consent calendar, nobody really gets to discuss it. And the way it looks like, we're spending $35,000 on a, I don't know what kind of truck it is.
33,000.
Or 33,000 here at our local Town and Country. And maybe you might, tell us what this truck.
It's to replace the 2004 Tahoe that we use quite extensively, which is actually one we acquired from the PD, which was acquired from Jeffco, and it's got about 140,000 miles on it. So replacing that, we looked originally at a Tahoe versus a pickup. Pickup is quite a bit less expensive, so that's one of the reasons for a pickup. The other reason why we wanted a pickup is we've got an air trailer that actually came over from the sheriff's office before Sheriff Stone left office. It's got a big breathing air compressor and stuff on it, so we need something with the ability to pull that, because I usually use my own pickup for when we have to move that trailer around and stuff. What that does is gives us the capability of providing breathing air, a way to fill our cylinders on scene if we get into an extended structure fire and such as that. So we waited all out, and that's why we decided to choose the pickup. And then it's four-door pickup, so when we go out on mutual aid calls and stuff, we've got seating space for extra guys and crew.
I guess, like I said, I just wanted to point out the fact that we are, as much as we can, spending taxpayers' money here in the city of Alamosa or the county of Alamosa. So I just wanted to make those points there, Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel Vihill.
With that, I move that we approve C 6A.
One second. I've got a motion and a second, accepting the bid.
Chief, Charlie.
C 6A. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Move on to Public Works. Tonight, we have a motion to approve the installation of six streetlights along Ross Avenue between 14th Street and 12th Street. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Several months ago, we started receiving some requests and some questions about increased street lighting on South Ross between 14th and 20th. After looking at the streetlights we had in the area, talking with the PD, and talking to community partners down there, we thought it was a valid concern. Police department has high rates of suspicious activity calls down there, and we thought that new lights would be, would be a valuable addition to the neighborhood. We got to, we made a request to XL for a cost for the installation of the new lights. It'll be six new lights in total. And after discussions with XL, we found out that the cost to install those lights was just a little over $8,000. We then had discussions with community partners and a donor that wishes to remain anonymous, who has, who has donated $4,000 to the project, will leave a balance to the city of 4100. So we're looking for a motion for you to approve the installation of those lights, and we'll get them in.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel Vihill.
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, I know we've had discussions as a counsel during work, work sessions and retreats about LED. Can you comment on what kind of lights these will be?
You know what? Right now, these will still be high-pressure sodium. We are in the process of talking with XL. They are making the LED conversions in the, they're going to begin that in the next year or so. As we talk, those, those technologies are generational, and they have turned over. So, so we will, we will be seeing LEDs in town, I would guess, within the next year to 18 months.
XL's essentially presented three options to all cities. Is to, option A is to have them repair the lights and upfront the cost, but then you see a lower percentage of the savings. Option B is if the city or municipality upfronts those costs, you can see a bigger portion of the savings. And then option C is to simply not do anything. So from a staff perspective, we are looking strongly at option B, seeing if, maybe if it's phased and trying to get our hands around those numbers. It's, it's been a little challenging in that XL doesn't have 100% accurate numbers and doesn't provide a not-to-exceed type thing, but we're trying to get our hands around that makes the most sense for the return on investment and the savings that could be seen by the city.
Thank you.
Counsel Gregel.
I just wanted to thank all your efforts, Pat, for doing something like that, because that street right now is used by Community Corrections. They walk down that street all day long, all night. There's a lot of senior citizens that live in that area. And, you know, when it's pitch dark like that, and you have people, a lot of movement, they were, they were scared, you know? So I think this, these, this adding these lights is going to really, really help out a lot. Thank you, Mayor.
It is, it is a valid request on that part.
Yeah. Thank you, Pat.
Counsel Stefano.
I also want to thank you, Pat, for this project. It's much needed. It's in my ward, and I'm really, you know, happy that things are moving along. We're doing some accomplishments in our ward. And I know there's been problems with the Community Corrections. People stashed stuff on Ross and hiding all this stuff. So I think it's, it's a great project, and a good job.
Thank you.
Counsel Daniel.
Pat, I just want to say that I appreciate the, when you explained to me, like, how we picked the distance for the lights and what that looks like to make sure that it was compatible. And also that the city is, even though some of this is county property, my understanding is we think eventually it will be city, and most of the residents, they're treated as part of the city. And so I really appreciate you sharing that with us, and that we're making this, this stride this soon. And so thank you for the work you put into it.
Thank you.
Counsel Vihill.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question. Pat, what's the timeline on this installation?
It won't be till spring. It'll take them a month to six weeks to get the, get the materials on hand, and we won't want to pay a frost charge for the installation, so we'll, we'll let the frost come out of the ground, and then we'll, we'll put them in.
Thank you, Pat. If there's no further.
Just one other comment. I want to thank whoever the community partner who's donating the $4,100. If you don't mind, let them know also that we appreciate their donation.
I'll pass that on, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Vihill.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve the installation of six streetlights along Ross Avenue between 14th and 20th Street.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the installation of streetlights between Ross and 14th Street to 12th? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll move on to city manager and legal. Tonight, we have three items. The first one will be a public hearing on ordinance number 7-2016, an emergency ordinance banning loitering and temporary or permanent residency of sexually violent predators within certain distances from places where children congregate within the city of Alamosa. Heather, or?
So we're, we're potentially going to tag team this. It depends on how good of a job I do at introducing it. Essentially, there's two items that came to staff's attention roughly around the same time. The first one was a court decision that seems to indicate that home role communities can ban sex offenders from their, their city limits. It's, it's obviously more complicated than that, but that's the type of court case that came to our attention. At the same time, we were made aware that the city of Alamosa will receive its first sexually violent predator paroling to the community as well. And we quickly put those two together and decided this was something that we needed to update counsel on. There's different options related to this in regards to, for counsel consideration. Obviously, an option is that you do not want to ban a sexually violent predator in any manner from the city limits. Another option, and is not recommended by staff, is to ban a sexually violent predator from the city limits in its entirety. The third option that then has some details you can pick among is to ban a sexually violent predator from those areas where children may congregate. And that would be the area that if, if counsel wants to consider doing some sort of ban, staff would, would make a recommendation that it be by on that. I do have three different maps that I can show you here in a second. That's a 500, a 1,000, and a 1,500. So if counsel were to be interested in banning a sexually violent predator, SVP for short, you could look at what that map would look like if it was a 500-foot distance, a 1,000-foot distance, or a 1,500-foot distance. With the potential parole of an SVP to Alamosa, that is what is triggering the nature of the emergency ordinance. Normally, this would carry into two different council meetings. That allows for, you know, the proper notification to the community. It allows for community input. But frankly, the parole, I believe, is on the 23rd of this month, so we don't have that timing option. It's something that if counsel wanted to consider, we wanted to make sure the action was completed before that parole occurs. Now, I've thrown around the sexually violent predator, SVP. That is actually a different level than what a category of sexual offender is. It is determined by the court. It's usually more of an elevated risk factors. There was a significant amount of attachment. There was a significant amount of attachments of what is looked at by the court when that determination is made. It's the type of offense. It's who was involved, the relationship between the victim and the person who violated, and those types of things. So it's not necessarily just that broad category of who needs to register as a sex offender. It's actually a different category. If counsel were to be interested in wanting to look at other areas of sex offenders, that could be something we bring forward at a different time for discussion. The item before you tonight is specific to the SVP because of the emergency nature of that. I'm going to show the maps, unless, Eric, did you want to say anything before we look at the maps?
No.
I did want to, the one thing we added towards the end as we were preparing this information is we were initially told that if this occurred, there's a likelihood that they would parole to a different community. That information was later corrected and clarified, and we were informed that, you know, they would still parole to Alamosa County. This is where the offense occurred. They would not be going somewhere else and potentially could even parole homeless. In case counsel was not very happy with that situation, we did include then an exception that counsel could consider in regards to if they offended here and they are being paroled here with no other options, and they would be receiving treatment such as in Community Corrections, that while receiving that treatment and housing, there could be an exception, but then once that ended, the ban is still in effect. I think an important clarification is, obviously, what's sparking this emergency ordinance is potentially someone who's paroling here. The ordinance itself's not just about who gets paroled where. It could be someone who's been paroled for 10 years, 20 years, and is just moving to a different community. This would apply to anyone who has been designated and is carrying that designation as an SVP. So there's some nuances there. Counsel can decide, again, on those big three options, but then within the potential banning of the locations, you can do the size or the length of the banning. You can also look if you want the exception or not. That's something that we felt we could easily pull in or out per counsel direction. So if we look at maps, let me pull the smallest one first and get them on the screen. So this one over here, what is showing up on the right where the hand is, that is the smallest distance requirement of 500. On the left, let me do the 1,000 next to it. On the left is the 1,000. And so you can see with the 500, you still have areas of town of the southwestern portion that remain uncovered compared to it starts to fill in on the 1,000 length. And then you also, on the 500, have this area, I would say somewhat in the center, that would be covered on the 1,000. And then you have this area up towards the north that, on the 500, would not be included as a ban. And you have that starting to be covered with the 1,000. And then if I move the 1,000 over here, so you can compare it to the 1,500, you can see that on that north, it starts to cover more of the boundary. And then the southwest portion is picked up significantly with the 1,500 feet compared to the 1,000. And you also start to pick up over on the eastern portion as well, some of those areas. You can see even with the 1,500, it's not the entire city. It is a good chunk of it. The red line is what designates the city limits. I know from conversations with the sheriff, and this could be potentially why we have some representation from the county, prior to us adding that exception, I think they were a little nervous if the SVP was gonna be paroled to the community without some type of plan. And so I think that outright ban, or, you know, the ban even with the 1,500, without that exception for the Community Correction, created some concern because the chances were they were, they're still gonna be paroled somewhere in the county, and how was that going to look? So before I turn the lights on, is there any questions on the maps? Do you want me to show the 500 again from a comparison, anything?
I have a question, Heather. So these places on the 1,500 that are open, just 'cause I'm not, I think, as familiar, are there houses in any of those places? They look pretty barren to me. Like, are there residences there?
Pat, it doesn't look like it to me, but I'm not as much of an expert on this as you are. You've got the airport down here, which isn't included. There might be on this eastern part, is that some residential right there?
No, that's all sewer property, city property. Most of the residential, other than the enclaves that you see in red that are inside the city, most of them, most of the residential in the city has been taken up.
What about this right up here on the northwest?
There's a few homes up there. There's also a little bit of room. Should CRHDC develop farther to the west, they could potentially open up some housing on that side. But with the 1,500-foot, the vast majority of the city limits are excluded.
Is there an example of, to compare the 1,500 feet to a complete ban? So we can see all of the areas that would be covered on a complete ban?
The complete ban would essentially be everything up to these red lines, but you would still have these that are county within the city limits. But the complete ban would cover, it would extend the shading to this red line over here on the southwest, so it'd cover the airport. It would extend it onto the lagoons. It would extend it up here for that little, so it almost covers everything. It's just the difference between the yellow line and the red line.
Thank you, Heather. Do we have any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I did.
Counselor Gregel?
You talk about a ban. Does that mean he could still come into the city, right?
That's a, so I'm gonna turn the, I'll turn the lights on. That's a very important question. This is only limiting them living within the city limits. Is that correct, Eric?
And loitering.
And loitering. But if they're working within city limits, if they're receiving different types of treatment at different locations within city limits, if they're visiting friends within city limits, all of that's permissible.
Even visiting friends?
Yep.
Oh? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. And so with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 7-2016, an emergency ordinance banning loitering and temporary or permanent residency of sexually violent predators within certain distances from places where children congregate within the city of Alamosa. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward, identify yourself for the record, and where you live. Thank you, Sheriff.
Good evening. I'm Robert Shacksen. I'm the Alamosa County Sheriff. Wasn't actually prepared to speak on the behalf of the county tonight. We haven't received a whole lot of notice. I think the chief police gave me a week's notice on this. We are very nervous about this ordinance, depending on how you wish to go. The Part III, where you exempt Community Corrections, would probably be something that's almost acceptable to us. You are going to put a huge, in my opinion, undue burden on the rest of the citizens of the county. Certainly, you can protect yourself in the city, but the other 5,000, excuse me, of us that live in the county are not gonna be protected from this. So this court decision doesn't actually cover counties. It just covers, you know, cities that are home rule. And I think it's still in the process, Eric. Is this not a complete done deal as far as the courts are concerned?
Well, that's an interesting question, Sheriff. The decision arose in the context of a lawsuit filed in federal court concerning a similar distance ban in the city of Englewood. And that court, at the trial level, decided that Englewood's ordinance failed a test of being preempted by the state of Colorado's fairly extensive sexually violent predator and sex offender regulations. It did not, that lower court decision did not get into potential other arguments that could have been raised. So the posture of the case is there was a final decision on the question that was addressed about the preemption by the state regulations, but the issue of any other kind of considerations wasn't addressed and could well be now remanded to the trial court again to bubble up through that whole process. So you're correct that there are aspects of this that were not decided by that decision.
And without getting too in-depth, because I'm obviously not the city attorney, I think there's been other types of cases related to other types of acts that municipalities can take if there's certain consideration given to different things. So there's other cases beyond this that weighed into some of these recommendations.
Okay. We're, you know, we're also, I worry about the other, the schools outside of the city limits that need to be protected from these individuals as well. So there's a potential for, if you pass, you know, anything but three with the exemption to Community Corrections, I believe that you are going to put an undue burden on the rest of us citizens of the county, the other schools that are not within the city limits, the other parks that are not within the city limits. You know, the sheriff's office does not have the staff that the city police department has, and you're going to put, in my opinion, my personal opinion, an undue burden on my office to, you know, to deal with this individual. And I'm told that if one of these comes to pass, one or two, or you don't exempt Community Corrections, Brent Boozer tells me that he will give this individual a sleeping bag and a tent, and he will go homeless in our county. And if that's, you know, how we want to deal with these kinds of individuals, I don't think that's our intent. So, you know, the least of this would be Community Corrections. I sit on that board of directors, on that screening committee. He's already been approved to go to Community Corrections. They would accept him, you know? And I might add that this individual, that we're, the specific individual that we're talking about, did actually perp in the city limits. You know, it was a city case in 2008, I believe, chiefs, that happened. This individual, specific individual that brought this to mind, you know, perped in the city limits. And now you're gonna ban him and push him into the county, where we're gonna have to deal with this individual. Personally, is disturbing to me. So I would hope that you would act on the option three, where you could put him into Community Corrections, where he can get proper treatment, supervision, ankle monitoring. Brent could probably answer a lot of your questions about how parole would deal with this individual. Nobody is real happy about this individual coming into our community, but he's coming. On the 23rd, he will be here, like it or not. We can't prevent him from coming here and, you know, how we're gonna define loitering? The chief's gonna have to define how you define loitering. Obviously, he's gonna be banned from an area like Walmart. I think that doesn't fit, you know, one of the areas. I think it's, actually fits in that shopping mall category, so he's banned from there. So we're, you know, and the timeliness, you know, this is Wednesday, Friday. I think the chief is prepared to do all the statutory requirements for the community meetings that we have. If you ban him completely from the city, I'm gonna have to take that roll with short notice. The chief is gonna actually probably make that happen for us. But Friday night is when we're scheduled to do that statutory requirement, those meetings. So a lot of this stuff is coming together very, very quickly. The chief has already planned, they've already got a plan in action, and they're ready to go. So it's just food for thought. You know, I wouldn't really object to you, you know, exempting Community Corrections and letting him come there. I think that's the appropriate place for this individual. If you put him homeless in our county, I think that's a disservice to the rest of the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is there anyone else in the audience willing to speak for or against this ordinance? Please step forward. Identify yourself for the record, please, and your address.
I'm Andrea Oakes-Hadamio. We live here locally in Alamosa. We live actually on Sixth Mountain View, so we're just right side in city limits. I do definitely agree that putting him out homeless in the county is an extremely bad idea. I think that due to the nature of the violent crime, that he needs to be tracked carefully. I am the mother of three young children. We live in an area that backs up onto a green space that's really just adjacent right to the river. We have a ton of foot traffic from runners, from the college, from other homeless individuals that we have in the area. And although we have not ever had any issues with that, I think that having someone in our community and just out in the county, for instance, released as homeless is probably the worst thing we could do. I think there's gonna be a much higher rate of recidivism if this type of thing were to take place where he's not getting proper treatment, or that he's not being properly monitored or policed, so that we know where he is going, when he is going, and when he's gonna be there. My other concern, however, would be, is what is the timeframe of this person being in Community Corrections? How long is he going to be there? How long does the treatment last? Even what is the treatment at this point, or what type of treatment did he receive while he was incarcerated at this point? You know, I'm just, I'm curious as to what the mindset is and how we plan on dealing with this. But I fear that if we release him into the community as homeless, what is to stop him from not being monitored and coming into the city and perpetrating a crime or taking a child out into the county, which, as you all know, we have a very expansive, open space here that is not necessarily easily, easy to track? So that, those would be my concerns, is that I feel that they really, this needs to be monitored very closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Steinberg?
My name is Diana Steenberg, and I live on Alamosa and First in that area. Oftentimes, I pick up my grandson over by Evans, which is not considered really a school where there are children anymore. But they drop off children, and I'm thinking about the school buses. School buses drop off children, and they spread all over the place. So if you're close to that area, it's concerning to me. And also, in the county where I lived before, most of the school buses are really good. They stop right at the house, and they let the children out, and they walk up their own driveways and get into their house. But some of them have to walk a quarter or half a mile to get to their house because the bus doesn't drive them all the way to their home. But what I would like you to consider, if someone like this is gonna have access in the city, there are some communities that have started safe houses in each block, and they're designated safe houses. So if someone is frightened, or they see something, or they're approached, they could run to a safe house. So I understand the county's concern, but I also see the city's concern. I wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Commissioner Allen? Thank you for being here, sir.
Good evening, and thank you, councilpeople, for giving us the opportunity to come and stand before you in this sad situation in our society when we have to sit and make decisions like this. Just, for some reason, you don't think it's ever gonna happen in your community, but here we are. And it's not only our community. Last week, at our County Commissioners Organization in Denver, we talked about this. We had three other cities going through the same thing that were, happened to be there that represent the counties that they were in, and we were able to discuss some of these issues. And it's just, I don't know what the answer is, but I think you know the situation we're in as a county. You look at East Alamosa, the population there, look at Mosca up to the north, the schools, where they let kids off and on, and where they congregate, and I just think it's something we need to put our fingers on the pulse and make sure we consider this, make the right decision. You heard our sheriff speak, and we've talked about this. I wasn't very happy with the way that all kinda come down so fast. You would think... so fast. Would think that they would give us a little more warning, a little more time to talk and consider this, but it didn't happen that way. So, we need to make, we need to make plans for this, too. But you heard Sheriff Jackson talk, and I, I echo his thoughts, and I think our commissioners echo the same thing. Consider option number three, I think it was, we would certainly appreciate it as far as behalf of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, council, for, for bringing this before yourselves and for addressing it. As Commissioner Allen stated, we really are grateful that you're addressing the problem, and I know that you'll come to a good decision. What I want to just say here publicly is nobody's talking about the victim. And the perpetrator has to go back to where the crime was committed. And there's no statutory, the way I understand it, level as to the population that he goes back to. And in a city, or even a county our size, the chances of not encountering that victim someplace is miniscule. I mean, like, I'm sure, I mean, it's very, very large. I'm sure they'll encounter each other. And I know that the victim has had to be told that his parole is off, that he's going to be, have certain rules. He cannot approach the victim. I don't know who the victim is, if it's male or female, it makes no difference. But I know somebody was, obviously, if it's a violent sexual predator, was violently hurt. And I'm sure that person's probably fearful. So, I think the, you know, it's not just the community, but it's, it's that individual and that person's family. So, I think we need to really consider that as well. And, you know, I'm all for community corrections. I think, I know that the person has to have an ankle monitor. There's an excellent webpage on Colorado that you can look up, Colorado laws and statutes regarding sexual predators. I spent quite a bit of time looking at them. A lot of the rules and regulations, they're fairly old and really do need to be updated. And I think particularly this one regarding the population of the community, and that's one that we can bring up to our legislators, I think, that that should be changed. There should be probably a population, before they say it has to go back to the community. Imagine if the community had been Mosca, you know, or Center, you know, it just doesn't make sense. So, I think there should be a population, what do you say, bar or barrier there. It just makes sense. So, I just wanted to bring that up, and any support that we can do, of course, to that victim and the family, we're definitely there for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Is there anyone else in the, thank you.
My name's Brent Boozer. I'm with the parole office here in Alamosa. I am also a resident of Alamosa County. So, I, I wanted to give everybody else a chance to talk, get their questions out, and maybe I can address some of them. He is paroling here. His county of conviction is here. He is paroling on what we call his mandatory release date. He has served his incomplete entire time in prison, and he has to be released from prison. So, he has no place to parole to, so he comes to his county of conviction. We have had him screened and accepted to community corrections. It's been ordered by the parole board as a condition of his parole that he reside at community corrections. Should the ordinance pass where he cannot reside in the city of Alamosa, of course, that does not prevent him from coming to Alamosa County. So, our only option, like the sheriff says, is he comes here. We have no place to put him. So, our backup plan is, yes, we are purchasing him a tent and a sleeping bag and telling him to find a place to camp out in the county. That is not the best, you know, position. He can be placed on ankle monitoring at community corrections as well. So, if he leaves community corrections to go to his treatment class at mental health and he does not show up, we will be able to tell where he goes. The ankle monitors, they have to be recharged almost on a daily basis. Of course, if he's living in a tent, that's not going to happen because he's not going to have electricity to recharge that ankle monitor. Some of the other questions you were talking about, what kind of treatment is he going to be in? He is going to be required to attend what we call sex offender treatment. That is going to be mandatory. He has to attend that. Now, understand, one of the other things of it is, is when he is on parole, he is under supervision. After he completes his term of parole, then that is done as well, and then there is no supervision over him as all. It's, he has to abide by whatever the state statutes and/or city ordinances are at that time. His parole term is a two-year period of parole. With his monthly earn time that he should earn while he is on parole, that will actually decrease that two-year period. One of the other things I just want to point out, though, is I don't know what you're looking for as in the attempt of the city ordinance and stuff like that. I will tell you that just passing a city ordinance itself is not going to prevent anything. It just gives you a means of dealing with that behavior, that incident, once he is caught. So, after his period of parole, if he moves and goes somewhere, if he moves into the city, we will not know. He can just go reside and not go register. And then, there again, once he gets caught, it gives the deal to deal with that. It does not prevent him. We know this guy's coming out because he's coming from Department of Corrections. You know, somebody else moves into the city that we do not know about, there again, it's just going to push them underground to where they're not going to, the local police department registering as they're statutorily obligated to. I will be more than happy to take any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, Counselor Daniel, do you have questions?
I do have a couple of questions, Brent. If you could help clarify some things as part of this. Even if he were paroled to the county, homeless or not, and I can talk about that when it's my turn to talk about that. But even if he were paroled to the county, aren't there still restrictions on him being around schools, and he still has to register and do all of that stuff? So, the, he's not allowed to be in some of those places based on state statute, correct?
There is actually nothing in the state statutes on that.
Okay.
There are conditions of his parole that he cannot be around those, you know, there again, places where kids loiter and stuff like that.
Okay. And that's just of his parole? So, that would be over after two years, or his less time?
After his parole is up, yes. The, the only state statute obligation that I know of is after his parole is done, is that he is still required to register.
Okay. And then follow any local ordinances based on his registration?
Correct.
And then how long, did parole plan for him to be in community corrections for his entire length of parole?
Right now, it is designated as 180 days. That can be increased at the officer's discretion.
And what would have been the plan, or what is the plan after those 180 days are up?
If he has no place to go to, then of course, it would be remaining at community corrections. To leave community corrections, he is going to have to have an approved address to go to.
An approved address and also approved job and place of, like, place of work and able to sustain himself, correct?
Well, depending. If he has, comes up with a friend, or has a family member that moves into the area or something like that, and they want to take him into their home, and there's no kids, you know, and it meets all the other requirements, yes, he would be allowed to move to an approved residence. It would not have to be that he has to have his own particular place.
Okay. And so, after he is going to be required to go to treatment through a sex offender, or an approved sex offender treatment program, do they, at the end of his parole, are there still recommendations for him to continue treatment? And if that happens, would parole have any say whether or not he would have to continue treatment?
After his parole is completed, if he wants to continue doing the sex offender treatment, he can. It's just that there's no, no muscle behind forcing him to go to that.
And so, the community supervision process wouldn't be in place, then, for him?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so very much for shedding light on this situation for us. We really appreciate it. What are some of the consequences if he violates his parole? What happens then?
Well, it depends on what the violation is. A low-level violation, if he missed a UA or something like that, he could lose what we call the monthly earn time. That decreases his parole term. The more significant ones, he can then go before the parole board. Then it's the parole board's decision on if they allow him to stay in the community or if they revoke his parole back to a prison facility. If they revoke his parole, if it's on what we call a technical violation, then it will be for a maximum of 180 days, and then he would come back out for parole for whatever amount of time he has remaining on his parole time. If there's any new law violation, the parole board does have the discretion on revoking the parole for the entire length of his parole term at a DOC facility. But then after that, he is released out into the community. Wherever he goes is wherever he goes. His, his supervision is completely done at that time.
Okay. Thank you. And what is the likelihood of extending the 180 days after we get to the first 180 days if we decide to go that route?
A lot of it's going to be based on his behavior. So, if he is being compliant, and like I says, if he has a viable residence where he can go to, then he could possibly go to that. If he has no place to go to, if there's, you know, violations, we can actually make that as, you know, conditions of the low-level violations, that he remains in community corrections. There again, if he has no place to go to and community corrections is the only option, then he's going to have to stay at community corrections.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Stefano.
I had a question, Brent. Is this person ever, does he use drugs, alcohol? Does he have any type of violations like that? And once he's off paper, like you say, and he's free to, to go wherever he wants, as long as he gets a residence, is that correct?
That is correct. And, and the only statutory obligation he would is, once he establishes that residence, is to register with the local law enforcement.
Okay. But there's no way to track him once, once he gets off to a residence, and he's off paper, he's off ankle monitor and everything else like that. He can pretty much move around wherever he wants. It's a sad, sad state of affairs to have to be doing this for somebody.
And once he is off, yeah, he doesn't even have to stay in Alamosa. If he wanted to pick up and move to Texas, he could pick up and move to Texas. Even while he's under supervision, if he meets a friend somewhere and he wanted to move somewhere, say if he found a friend in Walsenburg that they wanted to take him into their home over there, you know, like I said, as long as it's an approved residence, parole would grant him the permission to move. It doesn't say that he has to remain in Alamosa County the entire time he is on parole. It's just that he is paroling to Alamosa County because as of this time, he has no approved residence.
So, if he moved to Fort Garland, would you notify the law enforcement there that he's moving there?
Yes.
Is that a possibility?
Yes. And then he would also, there again, have to register with the Castilla County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Brent.
Counselor Hasley.
So, one, a couple of questions. So, on the 180 days, so if he's best, like, great behavior, all that, but still doesn't have a place to move into, you would then keep him in corrections?
Correct.
So, and then when you say a viable place, is it something you check out, make sure that?
Yes, absolutely. We go out, one, we check with, if he's moving into a house with somebody else, we check with the sponsor, whoever's residence that is. We make sure that they know what they're taking on, you know, that this guy is a required to register sex offender. There cannot be any children living at the residence, you know. If it's a big-time, you know, hunter guy, you know, of course, there can not be any firearms, you know. There's, there's a number of stipulations that have to be met. We cannot force the sponsors to give up their rights, per se. So, if they do not, then we will deny that as a residence, say that, nope, you know, you cannot live there due to these reasons.
Okay. And then the second part is the two years, or if it's for good behavior, then obviously, at that point, there's nothing that's going to keep him in corrections. You release him even if it's with a tent?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gregel.
I guess I was going to ask the same question. You keep on saying parole. Is that just a two-year deal, or how long is that parole?
It's based on the conviction. He, he's convicted of what we call an F5 felony conviction, and by state statute, that's a two-year period of parole.
Just, just two years?
Just two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Like, I've got an interesting question. He obviously will be paroled here as homeless.
Correct.
Does that preclude him from living in a car? Does that preclude him from living in a car? Because there are many homeless that live in their cars, and they move around.
Correct. Does, that would not, you know, however, in this guy's situation, he does not currently have a car. So, but should he obtain a car at some point in time? You are correct. It does not preclude him from. It would be just the same as the tent and the sleeping bag.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any further questions of Mr. Boozer?
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience willing to speak for or against this ordinance? Please come forward. Identify yourself, your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Patrick Hadamio. I live at Six Mountain View Place here in Alamosa. Whatever you guys decide to do with this individual, I think it is very important that we educate the community and the kids on who this person is. The best thing is to have eyes on this person. If everybody knows who this is, then everybody knows who to look out for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this subject? Saint None, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number seven dash 2016 and bring it back to council for more discussion or a decision. Counselor Gregel.
I guess I want to start. I, maybe this is not the right term. I want to apologize to commissioners and to the sheriff, but this thing was brought to us at the last council meeting. So, we were kind of, to put together some kind of an ordinance, emergency ordinance to kind of address this. So, I know it's a, it's a spare-the-moment type of deal, and by no means was the city going to try to make it hard for the county and, or county constituency. That was never in our play. We're supposed to come up with something, some measure, or, or something to at least monitor this individual, just like the sheriff was talking about, that maybe this community corrections type of deal would be the best way to at least keep this person under some kind of supervision until, I guess, he goes through the program. So, I just wanted to state that for the county's part of it, we, we're kind of in the same boat with you guys. It was brought to us, and here, you deal with it now, or he comes into the community, and then you have to deal with it afterwards. So, that's why it's before us today. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager Brooks.
And just to add a little bit of, some more information to that comment as far as how quickly this has been moving. The court case itself was decided on January 25th. So, it is something that has been very much of a, as it's coming out from that decision to try to get it to council. That's when we notified council on Monday, February 1st, that we were going to be having a work session on this. We were also able to send an email to the county on February 1st as well. We held our public work session on the 3rd, and then obviously had the refining of this information to prepare for tonight. But it is, with the court case coming out on the 25th of January, something that's moved very quickly.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to, as we're thinking about this, councilors, and the discussion that we need to have, this is the first sexually violent predator that has been paroled to our area in a very, very long time. They're rare in the system. I think that's important. We also keep talking about this individual, when this ban would be for any sexually violent predator, and it's not just about this individual. It is about keeping our community safe in the long term and not just one person. So, I do think that's important. The other side of that is, this person has completed his time in prison in Department of Corrections, and this is his parole opportunity. And so, I think we need to remember that, too. While it's very important to keep our community safe, he has also done his time and is taking his steps through the legal system. And so, I think we have to take that- And so I think we have to take that into consideration as we look at this, in addition to the much more important safety of our community. And so I absolutely, but I don't want us to forget that he has served some time and has done what he was required to do in order to come back into the community. The other thing is, is community corrections is not a locked-down facility, and we have to remember that he will have the ability to move based on his parole restrictions and requirements and community corrections. And this is a thing, if we talk about the exception, they don't actually get treatment in community corrections, so we would want to just make sure that exception is fixed there. But those are things I just wanted our fellow, my fellow counselors to think about as we look at this very important ordinance for the safety of our community.
Thank you. Counselor Stefano.
It seems to me that, at this point, we're not going to have any alternative but to adopt the ordinance as an emergency ordinance. I also move that we approve the thing for community corrections, that he goes to community corrections. Once, like we said, once he's off paper, there's nothing anybody is going to be able to do, except maybe keep track of him through the parole office where he resides after he's off paper and off parole. So I say we move that he moves to corrections.
Okay. Counselor Hensley.
So, in thinking through this whole process, I do think, obviously, it is a very scary situation. I do see what Chris Daniel says in the sense of that he's done his time, but at the same time, it is something that makes us very nervous. And so I think my personal preference is doing with the idea that at least if he's in community corrections, we have the most supervision we can over him. And that idea then, that at least then for up to the next 18 months or two years, or however long it is, at least the most supervision we can have is there, and it gives us the most, I guess, almost security. It's not going to say true security, but that idea versus him being a little freer. And hopefully even then, that transition will also sort of reinforce what kind of person he is. And obviously, if there's going to be some things that don't go right, we're going to see it, but it'll be something we can see because he is under that supervision. So I, my preference is definitely, as we go through this, is the idea of allowing that exception for corrections. So that's my view on it.
Thank you. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Counselor Coleman and Counselor Hensley asked this question, and I just wanted to, I had an observation and possibly a question, and that is, if this gentleman serves his time and goes through the 18 months or two years, whatever it may be, and if we were to pass one of these alternatives, could we also add in the boundaries so that, once he serves his time, there's only certain places in town where he could be?
So that is correct. Once he has served his time, his exception to live within any of those shaded areas has ended. So if he wants to live within the city limits, it could only be in those areas that are not shaded, depending on if you picked the 500, the 1,000, or 1,500, or he could pick a different community to live in.
And thank you, Heather, for clearing that up. And I think, counsel, that's very important for us to also consider.
Counselor Gregel.
I guess, I had a question for Counselor Daniels. You say he goes to community corrections, he lives there and gets his treatment there for 180 days or whatever the deal is.
No, so he lives there, Counselor Gregel, but he gets his treatment outside of the facility?
Okay.
And it is, it's not, it's considered incarceration, sort of, but it's not locked down, and they leave to go shopping, do their jobs, do that kind of thing. So it's there, it's like a house, and it's to help with the transition back into the community.
So, and you say community corrections, not a house somewhere out in?
Correct. It would be the facility on Lava Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think releasing him to community corrections would be good for the overall community, but we also have to think about what could happen after the 180 days. This week, I talked with a lot of people in Alamosa, and I can't tell you of one person who said that they would want a sexually violent predator living within the city limits of Alamosa. It's not that I'm saying that we should push anyone away to the county. I'm not in favor of that either. But if we consider this, and we consider some type of ban after he completes his parole, from what I've observed from the people that I've talked through, too, throughout the city, they're more in line with a blanket ban to protect all of the citizens in the city of Alamosa.
Thank you. Counselor, all right, well, you know, this is an emergency ordinance specifically designed to, you know, provide for a healthier, safer, and more protected community. And unfortunately, it has to happen just before this individual comes back to town to serve his parole time. That's unfortunate for all of us, because how many truly sexually violent people come into our community? We've got quite a few sexual predators. I think there's 30 or 40 in the community at this point in time, but no one like this individual. And so any type of measure of security for the public that we can offer, I think, would be in the best interest of the community. And so therein lies the dilemma. I know he did his time, I mean, once you do your time, but we've also heard that his recidivism rate is very high. He will probably do this again. How do you stop that? You can't stop that. This is an individual decision that individuals make, and who will be his next victim? It could be anyone in the city, it could be anyone in the county, it could be your neighbor, anyone. And so how do we protect against that? Or can we even protect against that? Passing an ordinance will, of course, put the burden on our police department as well as the sheriff's department and the folks in the county. But where do we start and where do we stop with individuals like this? It's a quandary we all have to face. And so in that, you know, it's important for us to really look at this, and if we can offer this person any ray of hope, change his behavior, I think that would be something that we should also consider. Counselor Daniel.
I just wanted to respond to a few things in your comments, Mayor. I do think it's really important that our community members practice, you know, vigilance in keeping themselves safe. And sexually violent predators do have a higher recidivism rate than other sex offenders, but I want to be conscientious about how we share that with our community and be responsible in that as well. We don't know any more than the next person whether or not this man is more likely to offend or not. And this is not about this man. This ordinance is about banning sexually violent predators from our community, not this man who's paroling to our community. And so I think we just need to be conscientious about how we continue to discuss this on an ongoing basis.
I appreciate Counselor Daniel, and I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to be very conscientious about the people around us, and whether they're predators or just victims. Just victims? Victims. Thank you. Anyone else? The chair will entertain a motion. Counselor Gregel.
I guess I was trying to find how to address this motion, you know, with, excuse me, with this person going to community corrections and living there for the, whatever, parole or 180 days? Maybe that's something I'd throw back at you, counselor?
Yes, Counselor Gregel, as the ordinance is currently written, it does create an exception for allowing the sexually violent predator to be paroled to community corrections as a condition of his living. And I was listening to Counselor Daniel's comments about how that actually plays through in terms of where he receives his counseling and treatment, and I would suggest a revision to the ordinance as presented to you in paragraph, subparaphrase 5C, which is the exception for community corrections, to have it read, "The sexually violent predator committed the offense for which such person was adjudicated, a sexually violent predator in Alamosa, is being paroled to Alamosa because the person has not been accepted at any other location, and is being housed at the Alamosa Community Corrections Facility as a condition of parole, and is receiving treatment and counseling as a condition of parole," rather than treatment and counseling at the facility, so that it accommodates that change. This exception shall only apply during such time as the sexually violent predator meets all of these conditions. So, once parole is up, the exception terminates, and he has to comply with the other conditions of the ordinance, which you need to discuss as to, do you do, as Counselor Coleman was suggesting, a complete ban? And I'd like to talk to you about that before you decide to do that, if that's where you're leaning, or the 500-foot, 1,000-foot, or 1,500-foot limitation.
While we're trying to decide, you wanted to go ahead and address that, please?
So, the Rials v. Inglewood decision that came out from the Colorado Supreme Court has language in it, and it's what lawyers call dicta. It wasn't essential to the decision of the case, but it has language in it that would suggest that a complete ban is fine, at least in the context of what they were considering, which was, does Inglewood's ordinance conflict with a comprehensive state ordinance that otherwise occupies the field? And the answer is no, it doesn't. Language would suggest a sex offender, because it was beyond sexually violent predator, that a sex offender has no right to live in any particular case, and a home rule city can do what it wants. I have other concerns about other legal issues with respect to a complete ban versus a ban that tries to get at distance restrictions from sensitive places where children congregate. And we could go into executive session, I think, if you want to discuss those a little further, but my advice would be to steer away from a complete ban and go more toward a distance ban from sensitive areas.
Thank you, Eric. And so our ordinance specifically deals with a 1,000-foot restriction, correct?
It's written at 1,000 feet right now, but the reason that we, that Pat actually prepared those plats that shows the effect of the different feet was because that's something that you need to consider. Are you comfortable with the 1,000, which was staff's recommendation? Would you rather have a different distance restriction?
I think that's probably something that we could visit about right now. Counsel, do you think 1,000 feet is sufficient? Maybe 1,500, 2,000, or a complete ban? I mean, that's something that we need to discuss. Our attorney feels that it's more defensible to have a foot restriction than a total ban. And so that's something we should consider as well. Counselor Daniel.
Sorry, I know I'm speaking a lot, but thank you, Mayor. I would agree with staff's recommendation about the 1,000-feet ban for living arrangements. And again, I want us to remember that this is about where they reside and where they live, not being able to walk around in our community. And so that's something to consider. The other thing that I would like to say is that I can understand the county's concerns about that, and so I think 1,000 feet still allowed some residential space within the community that I do feel we have some responsibility for as a community.
And if I could just jump in, I want to clarify the difference in staff's recommendation when the city attorney is saying the absolute ban and having to go, that's a much more weighted staff recommendation. I think the 1,000 is, we didn't necessarily spend a significant amount of time, there's not as much heartfelt put into the 1,000. If council felt 500 was better, or 1,500, that wasn't something that was extensively studied. So there is a difference between those two recommendations.
Thank you, Heather. And I've also had opportunities to visit with folks out in their community, and they're not excited about this at all, regardless of whether there's a foot restriction or not. They just would prefer a different alternative, which would be to totally ban, but that's unconstitutional, anyway. It's one of those things that we have to wade through. Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I respect staff recommendation, I also respect our attorney's suggestions as well. However, my issue with the 1,000 feet, and 1,500 feet, and 500 feet, is that when we pick a certain distance, we're then pushing those predators to certain areas and pockets in our community, to where right now, we have the power to do a blanket ban and prevent them from living in our community in its entirety. And not just this one particular person, but future sexual predators. So that's my concern.
Counselor Hensley.
So, it is a very tough situation, and I, when I'm listening to Counselor Coleman, and I totally see what you're saying in the sense of pushing them to pockets, but then I do come back to the idea that we can keep pushing out and pushing out, and we're still pushing them to other areas that obviously have people that are concerned. So it comes back to, I think I also feel that the 1,000 feet is a good distance, because really what we're focusing on is trying to have it so he's not around where children are. So looking at the schools and the centers and things like that, because I think, no matter what, if we even do a complete ban, we're still pushing it to other people. And so I think then, going back to the, because again, obviously, ideally, we'd like to put this person in a bubble, probably, I mean, so in a sense that we always know what's going on, but that's not what's going to happen. So I think having the 1,000 feet, which what really is going back to is protecting the kids, and where the kids congregate, and so that would be my thoughts on it.
Counselor Gregel.
Well, let me try to make a motion here, then, from listening to everybody. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number 7, 2016, and we use the section that says 1,000. And then also, I was trying to write down all the wording that Eric was saying, but he speaks too fast, so I'd like to also add that as part of, which is a section 5?
Yes, it's in paragraph 5C, which is the exception for residing at community corrections.
I'll make that motion.
I've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion for ordinance number 7-2016? Counselor Coleman.
I'd just like to make a comment. As city council members, I know that sometimes we have to compromise, and for me, I believe a blanket ban would be the best for the community, but from listening to all of your viewpoints, I think this is probably the best way to go for now.
Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. And to add to that, Mr. Coleman, I just want to make sure that the public knows that this was a very tough decision, and there seems to be no win-win situation for our community and for our children, and we're doing the best that we can for the future, as Counselor Daniel had mentioned.
I'd like to say that our purpose here is not to push anyone out to the county. That's the last thing we'd like, we want to do, or would like to do in any way, shape, or form. Our interest is in protecting every individual, whether they live in the city or in the county. How can we truly do that? It's a very difficult decision that we have to make. 1,000 feet, I think that's nebulous. I think if somebody wants to come in and hurt someone, they're going to do it, regardless of whether there's a 1,000-foot ban or a million-foot ban. If somebody wants to hurt someone, they're going to do it. And it's unfortunate that we try to deal with this in 1,000 feet, or 1,500 feet, or 2,000, because that's no restriction on someone that wants to do harm to someone else. And so that's my thought. Counselor Hensley.
I guess I'm just going to add the last thing, that again, like everybody has said, is this is a tough situation, and I guess I'm just real hopeful, at the same time, is that he does get the help he needs, and hopefully, we don't ever have to worry about this from this gentleman again.
Thank you. I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. And thank you, commissioners, for being here, and so, then we'll move on to City Manager Legal B, and this is a first reading on ordinance number 6, 2016, an ordinance authorized by Colorado Revised Statute, Section 12-47-313, 1D3, to eliminate the campuses of Trinidad State Junior College and Adam State University from the application of any distance restriction from premises licensed under the beer/wine provisions of the Colorado Liquor Code and amending Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of Alamosa, Colorado to accomplish that change.
Thank you, counsel. This ordinance, as we discussed briefly before, comes as a request from the Society Hall, who wants to be able to have a more standing ability to serve beer and wine at their functions. They currently have done that, I know because I've been there and had wine, but they do that pursuant to a special events permit, and this would allow them to do that on a regular basis. The ordinance does two things, three things, really. It removes the distance restrictions that are otherwise applicable. City councils have the ability to do that, as the local liquor licensing authority, state law specifically says, that you can modify the distance from schools restrictions with respect to schools in general, or particular schools. So, it eliminates that distance restriction, which causes a problem for Society Hall because of their proximity to Trinidad State Junior College. It also lifts it from ASU, which doesn't affect Society Hall, but since you're doing this, it makes sense to treat those two similarly situated higher education facilities the same way. And then, thirdly, it corrects, or updates, the reference in the earlier ordinance, which had eliminated the distance restrictions with respect to hotel restaurant licenses, to reference Adam State University, rather than Adam State College, as it was known at the time that that ordinance was enacted.
Thank you, Eric. Mrs. Brooks?
The only other point to note is, we did contact both TSJC and ASU, and they did not have any concerns related to this.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a first reading, and so, is there any further discussion? Counselor Gregel?
Eric, I thought we had already done something like this prior with, there's been I think a couple of applications that did come before counsel. I was trying to dig them up, but I couldn't find them. Was it a special permitted use, or how did that work back then? Because we allowed this before.
We did a similar lifting of the distance restrictions with respect to hotel/restaurant licenses. So, it was limited to that particular class of license, and that came about with Vista's Restaurant at Adam State wanting to be able to have a hotel/restaurant license. So, that got lifted at that point, and there may have been another proximity to Trinidad at the time, but again, that was only that class of license. This is a different class of license. This is the beer/wine license, rather than a hotel/restaurant license.
So, in the future, will this cover anybody that wants to come within close proximity to the schools and that with a hotel/restaurant license?
The hotel/restaurant license has already been dealt with. This would cover anybody who wanted to come within that proximity with a beer/wine license.
Okay. So, they won't have to come before counsel again to get that permission?
Correct. They would have to come before counsel to obtain the license, as anybody would, but they would not, we would not have to deal with this distance restriction for that class of license. There are many other classes of licenses, Holly might know, but there's at least 12 different classes of liquor licenses that you could obtain. This does not remove that restriction with respect to those, and in particular, I have in mind a tavern license, so a bar could not open up within those distance.
See, and that's what, that's what, where I was kind of confused. A liquor store couldn't open up within that?
Correct. A liquor store could not either.
Just the, now we're looking at beer and wine and hotel/restaurant?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Eric, is there any concern about the Gingerbread House being on Adam State's campus? But I was just thinking about it, there's no place that someone could be within 500 feet, and is that considered a separate school, because it's an early learning center?
You know, that's an interesting question. I would think that the Gingerbread House would be, I mean, it's not Adam State University, right? It's operated by a separate board?
So, it is operated by a separate board, but I thought it was still on their property?
It is on their property. Let's see how this is specifically worded. Adam State University Campus and Trinidad State Junior College Campus. So, this would allow for a beer and wine license in proximity to Gingerbread, since it's on the university facility.
As well as Adam State? The Gingerbread House is on, so they can serve beer and wine at Adam State, the Gingerbread House? Is that what you're saying? No, I mean, it's legal, I mean...
They certainly could.
They certainly could.
They could have a beer and wine, beer and wine and cheese reception at the...
Maybe we better not let the public know. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve ordinance 6-2016, removing the campuses of Adam State and Trinidad State Junior College from the 500-feet-from-schools distance restriction contained in CRS 12-47-3131D with respect to beer and wine licenses, and set it for a public hearing on March 2nd or soon thereafter.
I second the motion.
I've got a motion in a second on ordinance number 6-2016. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to a public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 4, 2016, and ordinance amending Section 14-51C of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances to exempt agricultural zones from the 8-inch limitation on non-ornamental plants and vegetation. Is this Heather, Pat, Eric?
Oh, I'll do this one. Thank you, sir. We talked about this on first reading before. I don't have much to add to the discussion that we had then. I think we pointed out, at that point pursuant to a question one of you had, we have a few agricultural zones within the city. One is the City Ranch, there's also one down by the airport, and there may be a third somewhere, we could pull up the zoning map, but there are limited agricultural zones within the city, but because they are agricultural, plants frequently grow to above 8 inches and should.
Thank you, Eric. And so, with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 4, 2016. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against ordinance 4, 2016, please approach the podium, your name, address, for the record, please. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 4, 2016, and bring it back to counsel for further discussion or a motion. Counselor Gregel?
If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve ordinance number 4, 2016.
Second. I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. I've got 6, 4, and 1 abstention. Counselor Stefano, is that your abstention?
I approve it.
All right. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on, then, to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Daniel?
Yes, I was trying to find them, I apologize, Mayor. I attended the marketing board and the rec board this month, and so, they were my first board meetings, and so, I really appreciated the patience everyone shared with me. We looked at the capital improvement plan during the rec board meeting. I think it was very fruitful discussion, and so, I appreciated the conversation that was there to talk about the capital improvements that will be happening. And then, the marketing committee was really looking at the, the Great Sand Dunes is having a, it's a special year for them this year, and they had over, they had almost 300,000 people visit the Sand Dunes last year, it was 299,985, and so, I'm really, I was surprised by that, and very excited for us, and so, the marketing committee is looking at celebrating that this year, working with the city to put up some signs. They are also looking at potentially bringing in a person to do strategic planning with them, and having that contract come through, and so, they're really looking at trying to combine what people would work on together, that we would have a shared message for the entire county, as well as the city, and what would attract people to be here, and they feel like someone coming in to facilitate a strategic plan and that would be very helpful. So, again, it was my first meeting, so I feel a little overwhelmed, apologize for that, but I do think that they're headed in a really good direction and had some great ideas.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Anyone else? Attended the legislative session, some of us attended legislative session, and got some firsthand information on some of the issues that are, will be facing us, and some of the issues that Colorado Municipal League is weighing in on, and so, it was very rewarding for many of us. Great lead-in experience for us, got to meet some of our legislators as well during the fun time afterwards. Got to attend the policy committee meeting, and I will be reporting on that as soon as I get all my notes together, but it was also very rewarding, and it'll probably be the last meeting as chairperson for me to head that, and that was rewarding for me as well, and it was great to sit up there and say, "Alamosa, Colorado," you know, and people take note when you say Alamosa, Colorado. Wonderful experience, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, we'll move on, then, to staff announcements. Heather?
Thank you. The chief has to drive to Greeley tonight, so he was going to do a few updates, but in order to try to get him out of here as soon as possible, I'm going to give his updates. So, he provided some bullet points. The first one is on March 8th, the police department will be hosting a lunch with law enforcement at the bistro, and that will be at noon. So, again, that's March 8th at noon at the bistro, and it will be lunch with law enforcement, and any, all public and any council members are invited to attend that. We'll probably go ahead and get that just listed on your council calendar, in case you decide you would want to attend that. The other announcement he was going to make is, he has been appointed to the Senate Bill 94 Interstate Compact Advisory Board. This is at the state level. The board is responsible, on an annual basis, to review and recommend a set of criteria for both detention and commitment for the purposes of determining which juvenile offenders are appropriate for placement in the physical or legal custody of the Department of Human Services, the formula for purposes of allocating juvenile services funds to each juvenile district, to submit recommendations concerning configuration of the detention/catchment areas annually to the Director of Division of Youth Corrections for a transmittal to the Executive Director, annually allocate the number of juvenile detention beds to each catchment area and judicial district, develop a mechanism for loaning of beds between judicial districts, develop emergency release guidelines that shall be used by each district, and develop juvenile detention placement guidelines. The advisory board includes representatives from the Division of Criminal Justice, Department of Public Safety, District Attorney's Office, law enforcement, public defender, local and county governments. The chief sees himself representing rural law enforcement in Colorado, and hopes to bring the unique perspective to this board. The other announcement that I have is, prior to my appointment as city manager, we had not necessarily a position, but a title, the Assistant City Manager position, and that was previously held by Don Cosklin, who was the Public Works Director. Since serving as your manager, we have obviously seen a lot of changes in staff and our leadership team, and so, I was intentionally giving it some time for us to have everyone get on solid ground, get a feel for what our responsibilities were as individuals and as a team, and kind of let everything get into a calm area. I opened it up for interest to the leadership team, our department heads, for who would be interested in this, and receive some interest, and have selected Pat Steenberg to serve as well as our Assistant City Manager. So, this is great. Really, the main purpose of this is, should something happen to me, we have a chain of command, we have continuation, he can sign in my absence, essentially, the city will keep moving forward should something happen to me. I think when we had the infamous Sal Manilla, both the mayor and city manager were out of town, and so, having this type of identification helps handle those situations that are sometimes unexpected. So, I want to thank everyone for their interest, and thank Pat for stepping up for this role. And I think Eric...
Thank you, Heather. I think it's important for us to at least take a few minutes and congratulate Pat, because Pat does a great job, you know, and everybody back there in that back row does a great job for our city, and it's interesting that you would keep it in Public Works, but that's probably one of the, you know, I guess he's just right down the hall from you, isn't he, Heather? And so, it's good to have that contact, anyway. Sorry to interrupt. Congratulations, Pat.
Unless anyone else wants to talk, Eric also has an update.
I just wanted to let you know, as you know, we have an application in Water Court for recognition of our appropriative right of exchange, which was filed last year. In addition to ours, there are two others that deal with appropriative rights of exchange in Water Court, one of which is the Trincheria Water Conservancy District, who filed in anticipation of perhaps obtaining some of our excess accretion credits, and the San Los Valley Irrigation Well Owners Association also filed for an exchange program that they want to get moving. I will recommend to Pat, as the Public Works Director, that the city file statements of opposition in those two cases, and we'll, of course, talk to those parties as well before we do so, primarily to keep involved in their cases, to make sure that the three entities who have made 2015 filings are all on the same page with respect to that. We don't really have any opposition, I don't think, to those applications, but want to keep in the loop.
Thank you, Eric.
I think we fully expect them to probably file for the same reason on us as well, and if there's not any questions for that, I do have one other item. Is there any questions on Eric's update before I move on? The only last update I have is, we will have a change to your council calendar. It's a minor change, and that is, for next week, February 24th, we had a special meeting scheduled for the municipal judge evaluation. That is still going to happen, but we are also working on pulling some information in regards to a work session that also involves a municipal judge. So, what we're going to do is have a work session that starts at 6:00, and then immediately following that would be the evaluation of the judge. There's several items in regards to alternatives that he's looking at from a sentencing perspective, the fee schedule, some different things like that, that we really want to update counsel on, and I think for many, hearing him explain how he feels municipal courts working, some of the recent changes that's impacting that, I think would be very informative as well. So, it's not a big change, but it is a minor change. We're adding the work session to start at 6:00, and then the evaluation would follow immediately after that.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any other staff announcements? We'll move on to our local liquor licensing authority action, which involves Calvios modification of premises, and that is, who's here to visit with us about that? Is that you, Eric?
Sure.
Thank you, Eric.
Because Holly was coughing and didn't immediately hit her speak button, so I will do that.
Holly didn't want, well, Holly's, her throat's been bothering her a little.
No, this is a fairly straightforward action. It can be done, and we have set it up to be done as an action that is just taken by counsel to approve the modification of premises, which is to add outdoor seating areas to Calvios, and you can look at the application itself, but it's on the east side of the building, and Planning and Zoning has reviewed that, as you saw before, for a special use permit from the zoning perspective. This is to allow the modification from... This is to allow the modification from the liquor perspective. You could decide that this was a significant enough modification that you'd like to have a public hearing held on it, which would not take place tonight, but rather would be set for more than 30 days down the road, or you can just take action on it tonight.
A quick question, Eric. Is this going to impact their parking and the extension of that doors into the covered area? They weren't parking there anyway, were they?
I don't think they park on that side of the building, no. Planning and Zoning looked at that, but no.
Thank you. Any other questions, Eric, or entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Counselor Gregel?
In them bringing this modification, do they understand how the process works, how it works? Maybe I should be directing that to Holly. Sometimes, you know, I think we need to explain a lot of this stuff, because they're not even in the audience. You would think they'd be here on some guy, are they in the audience? What Pat is? Are you a partner in this?
I think that's my fault. My, you guys ruled on consent calendar. I told Martine that he had been approved for a special use permit, and it would probably be a while, and he can stretch a leg if he wanted to. I think maybe he just thinks it's going to be in stretch the leg all the way to this house.
All right. Well, see, it's so important on these liquor license to make sure people understand the process and how they're serving out there and so forth, because it is, this thing is right next to a, it's almost a highway right there that's stretched there between Sixth Street and Main Street.
I think it is a highway.
Or it is considered part of the highway?
The highway, the two ways come around there, and that corner comes and goes right by it.
So that's very important to understand that, that it's so closed to all this traffic coming through there, and they whiz around that corner there. And I have every, I've tried, I've gone to eat there at that little other place out there, and try to get out of there, forget it. So I just, if he said that, he was, he understands it well. That's the only point I want to make.
He did, and I did let them know too, when I talked to them, that it would be at the end of the agenda that they would need to hear from.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
I move that we approve this modification of premises. My understanding was it's on the east side of the building, and they've had like playground equipment there for the kids before. So I don't see how this is going to impact, you know, their, what they want to do right there. We approved it for the brewery on the west side of their building, and I see, I see no problem with it.
Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve, yeah.
Thank you very much. I do have a second. Counselor Vehill, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say, I totally agree with Mr. Gregel. I have a little bit of some safety concerns here, because as, I drive this road many times, and people fly through that corner there a little bit and that. But it's there, you know, it's their property, and it's their modification of premises. I just want that to be on the record. Thank you.
Counselor Hensley?
My question was, is it going to be fenced at all? Do we know? I mean, is there going to be any sort of fencing, or is it just sort of out on the side there?
I think he said they would probably have fence. I don't know if they have fence right now.
They don't right now?
They don't have it.
So I was just curious if, in the sense, sort of the...
He said at the planning commission meeting that they would have a fence. He said it would probably be a condition of his modification process.
Because I think that would be a good thing.
It's in the minutes. He did say there would be a fence around the area.
I'm sorry that I missed it, then I apologize.
Well, I've got a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
I have some discussions.
Counselor Coleman?
I just want to commend staff for allowing us the opportunity to streamline this process by giving us an option to pass this ordinance without having a hearing and making a quick process. So thank you.
The extension along Denver, I've got a question. The extension along Denver, that's right up to the alleyway, isn't it? That's right up to the alleyway? Is that correct, on the east side? Near the kitchen, right next to the kitchen? That's, that's right along, isn't there like an outdoor area? Is that the outdoor area specifically?
The red area is what they want to have their optional premises.
Okay. And there's, there must be a large sidewalk there on the east side of that, kind of separating the street? Yeah, well, that's kind of what I thought. All right, so, okay. Got a motion and a sec, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to counsel comment. Anyone have a comment? Counselor Daniel?
Imagine, I first want to say thank you to everyone. I think we made some really tough decisions today and had good conversation. But I also wanted to say the San Luis Valley was mentioned in a national publication, and so I will send this out and share it and share it with city staff, but it is really about the strides we're making with youth who are involved in both the criminal justice system as well as the social services system. They're called crossover youth, and we are a leader in the country in what we do, and it's, it's a great collaborative effort, and so I wanted that to be recognized and shared. I think we do a lot of really good work here that sometimes we forget to celebrate ourselves when we have people nationally celebrating us.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one. Good luck to the Alamosa High School wrestlers as they go to state tomorrow, and all the, all the Valley wrestlers who represent us. Thank you.
Counselor Gregel?
Last council meeting, we handed out that water course, and I don't know if anybody's going to attend that, but it's coming pretty soon, so I don't know if you, you handed it out to each of the council, didn't you, Heather?
It was emailed.
Yeah, or you emailed it? Okay. So I just, I'm just letting everybody know that that's coming up pretty soon, so I don't know if anybody's registered for that. It's a really good program.
Counselor Gregel, did you register for that?
No, I've gone through it.
You've gone through it already? Okay, thank you. Counselor Coleman?
I want to thank Councilman Gregel for bringing that up, too. That was one of my talking points, but you beat me to it, I'm glad. The deadline for that is March the 9th. I did turn my application in today, and you can download the application online if you go to their website, but I think it would be very helpful, and they're share a lot of tools with you to help us when it comes time to make decisions on our potential water plan. It was helpful to me last year. It was just so much like drinking water out of fire hydrant, so, and I need to go again so I could learn more. So Heather, were you going to say something?
Just to add on, I think throughout the last year, we've had interest expressed by different council members of wanting to learn more about water. I know it's quite the time commitment, and that makes it challenging, but if it's at all possible, it's probably the best way to, to learn on the water situation for the Valley.
And then I would like to, I would like to thank Heather, as well as Councilwoman Hensley here, for attending the art gala this weekend. It was a fun event, and the chamber did a great job of promoting that event, and I would like to thank all of the people who participated and donated items for us to auction, and I think we raised quite a bit of money. So I was just glad to see so many people in the community come out dressed up, looking good and things like that. So thanks to everyone who showed up and participated.
I think we also saw some hidden skills that Councilwoman Coleman has in regards to auctioneering, so very good skills.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you saying Counselor Coleman's a fast talker? We're proud of you, Counselor Coleman. Thank you very much for representing us there. Wonderful opportunity for you, as well as for the community, and, and, and great work. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Hensley?
Well, I was going to do the same thing, was just commend Counselor Coleman. You did just such a fantastic job, and it wasn't even so much the auctioneering, but just how you facilitated all the way through that and made it very entertaining. So thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you all for your kind comments. I appreciate it. You have me blessed up here.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? Counselor Vehill, you're looking out over there on the screen. What's going on? You don't have anything to say anymore? All right. Well, with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.